Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you very much for the invitation to be here this evening. I'm Lee Zell and I work with you on the National League of Cities Program, the National League of Cities Service on Warranty Program. And I'm very excited to be here this evening because we've only mailed out one letter. We promised that we send out three letters each year to communicate this program to your citizens. And I know that right now we're sending out another one, but with the first letter, one letter gone out to your community, already we had 198 families that participated in the program during this just first letter. And of that, more than 15 program assistance opportunities came up. And that is, the program, speaking for everyone here, the program is meant to take your citizens, who as we discussed when we started the program, are sometimes challenged with lateral water or sewer line issues. These are the connections between the street typically and up to your household home. And oftentimes, those lines become clogged, they collapse from old age, they have tree roots in them. And as I think we mentioned, there's a lot of opportunity with the heavy rains that come with these sewer lines sometimes backing up into homes. And the purpose of this program, this is a National League of Cities program. The purpose of this program is to reach out and help cities with public policy issues. This is a very specific one and it's a very important one. And I'm excited because we found 15 citizens, 15 families out of that first 198 that signed up. And in that just, not even a half a year, we've already taken care of their issues. So, these are families that could have faced anything from $2,000 to $8,000 repairs easily. And we've been able to jump in right away and resolve these issues. There's typically no cost, other than that monthly $5.75, $7.75 for sewer. Or in-home, which is water and sewer put inside the house, that's $6.99 a month. We're able to help those citizens with whatever comes up. And so I just wanted to, first of all, point out that because the success of the program is based on the understanding of the program and the participation by your citizens. And the most important details that I feel like I want all the citizens to be aware of, as well as the council, is just to remind you, this program uses no city money. Doesn't cost the city any money for this program. This program number two is voluntary. So there is no requirement of any citizen to use this program. However, it is voluntarily available to every single citizen of the city of East St. Louis. And that means that each of us individually can decide if this is going to do for us what we need it to do, which is take care of the water line or sewer line or in-home toilets that's stopped up and so forth. And that's why the program exists. So just to go a little bit further, this program specifically uses your city's local licensed businesses to do these repairs. Now, I will, I need to come forward and tell you, when we first started, we were trying to find enough contractors, plumbers that are local. And I think we found all, but we had to have one from outside the city, within the county, but outside the city to help out with the demand. But the key here is, is this program turns back the business to your local businesses. That means they're coming to the city to get local permits to do this work, inspections by the city. And of course, we're supporting these businesses because they get their permits from the city and they're licensed from the city. To go a little further, for the citizens to understand, this program is affordable utility line repair solution for families on a budget. So, when you have an issue with your sewer line and you wake up and you're going, "I really need this solved today," if you receive this letter in the mail from the city communicating this program is available from the National League of Cities, it's your opportunity when you receive that letter to decide if it's the right thing for you. And if you choose to sign up for this program, then when you find that you have a water line break or a sewer line break or a stopped-up toilet inside the house, you can actually just make a phone call, one call, and now a local plumber is going to come and fix it. And rather than come to the door and tell you how much you owe, they're going to come to the door and say, "I'm out here, gonna work on it, it's all taken care of." There's really not much that you need to be concerned about, other than just knowing that I'm here to do this work for you. The other thing is, is this program is an educational program because one of the key things that we wanted to do for the city is help communicate to the citizens first, before they have an emergency, that if this does occur, that rather than call the city and unfortunately find out, as all cities have the same issue, that oftentimes, these issues that are in your front yard are outside of the area that the city can take responsibility for. This is a private property issue. So this program is where the city's able to say, "We understand that this is outside of our realm, but yet we are making this program available at no cost of the city and voluntary for all of our citizens if they need it." Also understand that this program has no pre-existing conditions. So, as much as we'll ask you, "Does, when you turn on the water, does the water come out?" Yes, then your water line qualifies. If you flush a toilet, does it go away? Yeah. Well then, your sewer line qualifies. That's the extent of our checking the system before. So the next day, if you sign up and you have a problem, call us, we're coming to help.
I just want to add too, Mr. Lee came to us, Mr. Zell came to us last year and presented this program to us through the National League of Cities. And the program is designed for cities like ours who have aging sewer systems and things of that nature to further supplement helping our citizens where we could not. This program was created because of areas like ours, where we have aging sewer systems that we have not been able to fix totally yet. So we have allowed the national cities to come in and offer an opportunity for citizens who can't afford high payments and this and that. It's very, very, it's not too high. And last year, I know you stated that even if you got behind a month or two on your $6 per month, if you had an issue to arise, all you had to do was pay your $6 or $12 and it would still come out and fix your system. So that's one of the things that I remember. It's just designed to help our citizens in cases where we cannot. So, again, it's through the National League of Cities, some of you, when you receive your letters, that's what it is. You have the choice of whether or not you want to participate in that and to cover yourself. So, again, I just want to thank Mr. Zell for coming. Again, we wanted him to come out to further explain because I know that a second letter will be going out.
Yes. And I'll just quickly say, we send out a letter in the spring, right about now, and it typically talks about sewer line. The reason is, is right now everything's coming back green and those tree roots are gonna go crazy looking for water sources and they go for your sewer lines. And that's why you have sewer line backups. In the fall, we'll send out one about water lines. That's because we know it's gonna get cold, we want to remind you of that issue coming up. And then finally, we send one out in the winter, February timeframe. And that's basically for your inside-your-home plumbing. But the reason we point that out at that timeframe is because with the extreme cold, sometimes the pipes that are in your walls have issues and that's why we're just trying to let you know about it. So you won't receive any phone calls, these are strictly letters, and it's up to each citizen if they want to make the decision to step forward and say, "I want to learn more about it." You'll never receive phone calls from this program. This is just information that is always available. And so far this year, it's already proven in half a year, the great success that it can be for any citizen that needs this help.
And I just want to thank Mr. Lee for coming. And I also like the fact that local contractors are used to meet their needs for the citizens. So thank you again. Do we have any questions or comments from Council?
No.
I have one. You mentioned $6. It's the regular price of $6. That's the minimum or that's the maximum?
Actually, let me define that for us. The water line is $5.75. The sewer line is $7.75. And inside your house, inside, water and sewer together, but inside your home is $6.99 combined for both inside. And each citizen can pick any of those they wish, or they can have all of them. And it's their choice and it's on a month-by-month basis. So there is no contracts, there's no requirements. If you want to have it one month, great. If you want to have it six months, you just continue until you decide to stop. There is no contract in this program.
And what type of letter do you get to verify that you're a member of that water line? Do you get a certificate or what do you do if you have a problem and you don't, do you call, do you get, do we get a number in the mail?
Yes, sir. Each citizen, when they say, they make the decision on their own that they want to use this program, they sign up. And when they do, they will receive a letter that says, "This is the number you would call when you have, if you have a problem." And then if they have a problem, that's all they do, they make one phone call. And then we direct their local contractors straight to them. The contractor is getting us, we're paying the bill, you're not. So the contractor comes out, does all the work that they need, they bill us, not the citizen. And this means that the citizen doesn't get a bill later, other than the $5.75 or the $7.75 or the $6.99, or all three of us, what they choose.
Thank you. That's it. You hit it. Thank you so much.
Do we have any more questions from Council? Well, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
This time, we're moving on to item 12, City Manager Comments.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir. You can come forward or you can stay over here.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, citizens.
Good evening.
To give everybody another, first thing I want to talk about is the PSAP issue. It's something that we've been working on, I met with the Chief of Police today and Captain Cole, I believe. There may be some other municipalities that might be interested that we weren't initially targeting, outside of Coke, Yanceville. There may be some other people that weren't even on the list that might be interested in partnering with us and we can actually make a present. So I'll let you guys know, the Bureau's working on that. We do know it's a pressing issue and we're working hard to get that squared away. One of the pressing needs that I want to put forward to the Council is a backup generator for City Hall. It's very important that we figure out a way to finance the generator. So just in case something happens or we have some type of disaster, if everything goes down in City Hall at this point, we don't have any backup at all. We've looked at alternative funding routes. We're still looking at alternative funding routes, but I'll tell the Council that it's the pressing, present priority that we figure out some type of solution to the generator issue. We are close to getting our elevator inspections. We are almost there. We had to get the floors taken up and new floors put down. Now we're waiting on the fire marshal to come out and to go through, go back through the things that they said was wrong and check. We had all those things bringing to our ready. I had a great meeting with the Lieutenant Governor two weeks ago. She expressed her interest and the Governor's interest in downstate Illinois. I have set up further meetings with people from her office to see if we can get some help or resources from the Governor. We're gonna test and see how true his commitment is and we're gonna hold him to it. Also, we are working on 2014 and 2015 audits. We plan to have those done by August the 31st, that is the projected date. We've already started the process. I have a meeting scheduled at the end of this month to meet with the auditors to start that particular process. And finally, I would like to let the Council know that we did choose community council members. Some of them are in the room at this time. I want to thank them for being here. Our first meeting will be Monday night at 6:00 PM. It will be our inaugural dinner. We'll kind of talk about the mission and vision of the Council. And I want to personally thank each and every one of them for volunteering their time so we can have a more transparent and productive City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we want to thank you, City Manager, for such an innovative idea of having the community involved, the community council. This administration is really, really wanting to reestablish relationships. The vision is to have a transparent government and we are really appreciating your efforts in moving that vision forward. Thank you so much.
And one last thing, on June the 6th, for everyone that's here, we're gonna have a Disaster Relief Preparedness Seminar. It's gonna be held by Mr. Benson, who's over our Emergency Management System. So everybody, the flyer will be coming out, it'll be June the 6th. It will be here in the retunda at City Hall and there will be people from San Clark County, other organizations here in Illinois, you should be seeing the flyer coming up. For that, so.
And we really want to encourage our citizens to come out to the Disaster Relief Training. These type of meetings are very, very important. When disaster hits, we need to make sure that we have been proactive in preparing ourselves for those moments. So we want to encourage all our citizens to come out and, you know, just get in on the good information that will be shared.
Thank you.
Thank you. What time?
It will be 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM?
Yes.
Do we have any City Council comments at this time? Councilman Mosley?
I don't want to take the mayor's thumb, but she invited the council members to last Sunday, Mother's Day, and it was great. The food was good to me. I enjoyed myself. I enjoyed the program. It was wonderful. The mothers, you've just seen them, melted over. They came all kind of ways. Some came on push carts, little push things, some came on canes, but they was here. It was good. It was successful. And to add a little more, I never did this before, but I want to help. And maybe I'm going a little too far. I want to let him know that I really mean what I said to him and the mayor and the Council. I want to have a meet and greet with the new City Manager. I want to know if the Council would get behind him and me and whoever that would start it. I would put my money up front first. I don't have a problem with that. It takes money, I want you to know. We don't want the city to have, no finance charges on it. But we need to let the citizens come out and greet him, take pictures with him, let the mayor show off her new picture. And come and do it. Now, we can set a date, we get together, get a committee, meet and greet our new City Manager. He's excited. He got lots to offer the city. We're gonna need his expertise down the road. So come out and meet him, take the picture with him, take it home with you. He's a good guy.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to say, I want also, City Manager, you didn't mention about the steps up there, that hole in the steps.
I haven't found a hole yet. We're gonna have to walk together to go figure that out.
Everybody can see that hole. Okay. Well, after the meet, we'll show it to you. What about the toilet paper and the hand towel and the soap?
We finally got our supplies last week.
Is it in?
It should be in.
Okay. I'm okay now.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley. Councilman Gill. No comments? No comments? Okay. Councilman Mosley, I mean, oh Lord. Councilman needs to.
I know you're loving it.
I keep my comments brief. I just want to piggyback off Councilman Mosley. Mayor, thank you again for having the inaugural Mother's Day banquet. It was splendid, I enjoyed myself. And all the citizens, I can tell by the smiles on their face, they enjoyed themselves as well. City Manager, keep up the good work, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Well, I do want to say, we had a wonderful time at the Mother's Day program. It was no cost to the city. We had sponsors, and I'd like to thank the sponsors, who helped to fund that program. And the mothers for coming out. We are, again, working on reestablishing our relationships with our citizens, reestablishing them. And so we want to show appreciation in every opportunity that we have to do that. We have great mothers, we have great citizens. And all too often, we don't take the time out to appreciate one another like we need to. So every opportunity that we have to appreciate and highlight the good things that are going on in East St. Louis, we're gonna take the opportunity to do so. So I just thank you all for being here and thank the citizens for their participation, whatever. City Manager?
Also, since we're doing appreciation, I want to thank Mr. Mosley for cutting City Hall's grass last week for us. The volunteers' time to get that. I want to let him know that he's going to notice and we appreciate you.
Thank you. I didn't even know you were gonna say goodbye to that. Talking forgot about it.
We certainly appreciate the Councilman coming to cut our grass. He didn't have to do that. But we appreciate you serving and extending your service, Councilman Mosley.
You're welcome.
Right. At this time, we're gonna move on to Citizens' Comments. We have Citizens' Comments from Ms. Dorothy Joshua, Ms. Lawanda Carraway, Mr. Frank Davis, and Mr. Kaylee Moore. We're gonna start with Ms. Dorothy Joshua.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens of the city. I was gonna say, let you all know that we've had, since we've had the City Manager form of government, we've had 18 City Managers. And I was gonna tell him not to get too comfortable, but since a meet and greet, he may be here for a minute. And, you know, every time there's a murder in the city, my heart gets heavy. And because I feel like it's my own child that has gotten murdered. Because I have two boys, 32, 39. And they live out of state. One live in Des Moines, one live in Florida, because I don't want that to happen to them. So I keep them out of state. My grandchildren are growing up out of state without me here. I'm the only one left in this city. All my family and friends moved out and they don't even come here to visit. So I have no visitors at my home. So that gives me plenty of time to share my time with you all. But I, you know, trying to get my grandson, he's a teenager now, trying to get him home to visit me. You know, you go Google, everything is on the news, you go Google. I Googled the travel guide, because I'm sure that's what him and his friends did. East St. Louis Travel Guide. Stay safe. On the whole, East St. Louis is very unsafe and dangerous. One should avoid visiting the area unless absolutely necessary. It is, it's an area with high crime and drug rate. Visitors should avoid walking the streets at night at all costs. Visitors should be familiar with the area before arriving in East St. Louis. Then they said, "But there are areas that are secure." I lived in Edge Mount area. There was a time Edge Mount was secure and pretty safe, but it's getting, but it's just as many murders occur out there, just like the 1/3rd. This is four murders in one month that has happened in East St. Louis. I do not hear no conversation, I do not, we only have 27 patrol officers. We do not have enough patrol officers. Yet, you know, there could be executive sessions about not defunding TIF, there could be executive sessions about who's gonna get raises or whatever, but there is never no conversation about how can you make the city safer, how can we get more patrol officers on the street to do some patrolling? And when you Google East St. Louis, it's really this hard. And there's another article, I'm not gonna read it all, but it say, "East St. Louis, the corruption that follows when Black runs a police department." It is really disappointing to see all this negative stuff. I know I'm negative, but I'm not near as negative as what's out there on Google about East St. Louis. All you have to do is Google "city of East St. Louis," then Google "East St. Louis Police Department." And it's nothing ever good that's about it. And the last comment I need to make, I'm still waiting on the regulatory affairs to find out how to make sure every citizen have a trash pickup. This, I have a picture here, I put it in color so you can see. Where people, just on my street alone, don't have trash picked up and they go and dump their trash at this house. And now it's gotten to the point, this picture is kind of old because each month I get sidetracked and forget to bring it. But this picture is kind of old. Now, grass is growing up and it's gonna be a stinky mess. And this is about four houses down from me, it's a stinky mess. I wouldn't even want my grandkids to come here because I don't even want them to be playing out in my area or walking down the street thinking that this environment is an environment for anybody that you live in. But I'm the only one here and I deal with it. But until you all start dealing with the city, the citizens' issues and that personnel matter of hiring your family and friends, this city is still gonna continue to go down.
Ms. Joshua, we want to thank you as always for your comments, but let me address a couple things. The conversation on the patrol officers. I know that the City Manager, City Manager along with the Chief are earnestly working on our police and the staffing and how we can better make our city safe. So that's an issue that's not only important to you, but that's important to the Council as well. City Managers, you want to comment?
Yeah, I mean, public safety is always a priority. And I understand the concerns, Ms. Joshua, the public perception concerns, the regulatory affairs concerns. The problem is right now, as we're shown that, not only just the regulatory affairs, but also in the police department, we don't have, we currently do not have enough men in order to even meet a minimum man requirement. We are working, I've been meeting with the Chief, I've been meeting with the Captain, we've been working week after week since I've been here in order to figure out a solution to put more presence and more people on the street. I'm also working on figuring out how to fix our regulatory affairs system, how to put people in place in order to rebuild the department itself. And how do we find ways to actually staff those positions and make sure that not only do we write tickets that people can tear up, but we write tickets that will also be enforced at the end of the road. So I'm, Ms. Joshua, I'll tell you personally that I am working on figuring out how to solve that problem and how to fix that particular system so we can put something in place that people will have to obey, the tickets that we write. And currently, we just don't have enough people to write the tickets in the first place. So I'm working on that. Ms. Joshua, I'll tell you, the public perception is bad. It's been bad. It didn't happen yesterday. But I'll tell you that if we're able to figure out how to fix this system and make it work all together, we'll be able to rewrite our story. And I think we control that at this time going forward. So thank you for your comments, but we're working hard to figure these things out. I know I am.
Okay. And in addition to that, not only will we be able to rewrite our story, we are currently rewriting our story. Now, there are changes that we're making and they are small and incremental to some. But trust me, there's a lot of hard work and sweat and tears going on down here with the changes that need to be made. There are cultural changes that need to be made and cultural changes do not happen overnight. And it takes a lot of courage for the people who are in the midst of it to do what we do on a day-to-day basis. So with that being said, I just want the citizens to know that we are truly working on your behalf. In addition to that, we also want to comment on relatives being hired. We have a new City Manager, we have a new administration that is focused on hiring those who are qualified, not those who we know, who we know. I've been here a whole year and I don't have one family member here, except for the one who was already working here several years ago before I've been started. So this is the direction of the administration that you have, working for you. So we just wanted to make sure you knew that. Okay?
I don't have any family members either.
Right. At this time, we're gonna add- Right, at this time, we're gonna ask Ms. Lawanda Caraway to come forward. She's not here. Okay, we're gonna move on to Mr. Frank Davis. Okay. Kaylee Martin? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Frank Davis?
First of all, to the council. Just come today to ask questions, and I'd like to put some pictures here that I've taken over the area which I live, things that I'm trying to do in that area, working with people in that area, to try to see what we can do in order to get the grass and everything cut. Our property that we have over there, basically, I've turned to trees in that area. I came here, my father brought me here, my mom and dad brought me here from Mississippi, back in nineteen sixty-eight. East St. Louis was full of houses and everything, land was pretty and everything else, but over the years, we neglected some things, allowed things to just backlog and everything. And I know it's always having a money problem and everything else to get things done. I have not forgotten that either. So I think what we could do is start trying to work together. A lot of times, we stopped blaming and started working together, I think we can get some things done.
Absolutely.
Because as long as we point fingers in like that, we always gonna have some kinda downfall, we gonna have some kinda anger, and some kinda disapproval of the board and everything else, but I think it's time for us to start looking and start coming back to what we do know. And once we do that, I think we will find ourselves standing on top like we need to be. Criticism is just what it is, the criticism, but we can change criticism, but we gotta get into it, we gotta get in our heart and our mind, that change first begins with us. And once change starts beginning with us, then we can start moving forward to sort of changing things. As long as we have a dim look on things, we gonna have a dim outlook on it. So once we start looking at things in a positive way, that we can change. Since Mayor, your heart changed, I believe that you wanna do something for the city. I believe that it's more than just a position, too many people have a position and not doing anything with it. And I'm believing, and I'm trusting that what I'm saying is true, I'm trusting that what we can come together and do things like we need to do. First of all, we gotta get rid of hatred.
Amen.
Once we get rid of hatred, we'll start looking at love. And once we start looking at love, then we start looking for love for the community, love for the people, and the people killing people because there's no love. They are rejected, they feel rejected themselves, and so when they feel rejected, they look at people that reject them, and they don't want no part of the people, and they will come to killing one another, and destroying one another, hurting families. And when you get to that situation, nothing ever get down. I thank God that I was raised as a Christian. I walked away from my inheritance as a Christian, son of God, and now I'm back. I've been back for ten years. I wanted to move, I had the means to move out of this city, but the Lord won't let me move. And this is some of the things I think that you will see here, what God is calling me to do. You'd like to look at some of these, you might. First picture's my home. My money, my little bank's money, lady by that's money went into this. I did this. This church that you see is coming up now, it's coming to nineteenth and Lincoln. I have a lot of people on my job, I have people that even come to the area to even look at, say, "Why would you wanna do something like in this area?" Because I believe that the people in this area, they had a chance, they could change. And I first changed, and I'm saying all this, and I'm not trying to leave out, I'm a minister, actually, I'm a pastor. Ten years in this area as a pastor. I started working out of my home and out of different places rented, raising money from the church, not getting any money from the banks in this area, because they all told me they don't work with building churches anymore. But I found out if I trust God and move with God, he don't need banks. He just need willing hearts. God, take a people like us, that's downtrodden, that's deep down, that's broken, don't have anything, those are the people that he's rising up. And as long as you look at God and trust God, you will rise again. East St. Louis will rise again. But we gotta put our, we gotta put our hope and our faith in God, and not just in people, 'cause people gonna let you down. They gonna let you down. God is always gonna lift you up. If you don't mind me saying this, and I don't mean no harm, and I don't mean, a lot of people say, "Well, they don't believe in God." Well, that's them, that's them. I would not deny my God. So therefore, he's the one to raise up. That building you seen, it ain't come from, it come from the people here, and people around the areas. I got people from St. Louis coming to the church, I got people that I'm meeting there, they wanna come to this church, and it's still in progress. And I got people to come, and they're coming to our ministry, faith delivery center, from Granite City, all over they're coming. We will rise again. Mayor, I ain't coming to put down, I had a lot of things looking at when I looked at that, I'm just asking you guys for help. Help restore the area, because when the people come, they don't wanna look down and see the trees. There's nothing but trees there. It actually, there's nothing but weeds that actually grew into trees, because over the years, I've been trying to get people to help with it, nobody really stood up. This is my first council meeting I ever come to, maybe that's why I don't know how to conduct myself here. But I'm asking you for help.
What's the address, Mr. Davis?
The address, the address, the new address is in eighteen, nineteen-ten North Nineteen Street, eighteen-fifteen's my address.
Nineteen?
Ten.
Ten.
North Nineteen.
Well, first of all, we appreciate you. We appreciate you in your encouraging words, and we also appreciate you sharing your testimony with us, and how good God has been to you and your property. It is beautiful.
Yes.
And we thank you. We thank you, because that's what we need.
Okay.
We need that. Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
We'll have Ms. Clements, we'll get with you, Mr. Davis, on the tree.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kaylee Martin, she's not here. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moving.
Second, it's been moved by Councilman Easter, secondly by Councilwoman June Hamilton-Dee. Madam Clark, will you please hold her over?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton-Dee?
Yes.
Councilman Easter?
Yes.
Councilman Greenwood?
Councilman Greenwood.
Mayor Jackson, yes.
Yes.
We have four hours before now.
Happy birthday, you're a man. Hey, bro, it's his head, let me check it out. What's going on? We got one.